It is now seven minutes after ten. This is a second forum call of the City Council. We have three council members present. Would council members in the building please report to the council chambers? This is a second forum call. We need seven for a forum. Ten, we have six members present. We need four more for a forum. Council members who are in the building, if they could please, report to the council chambers so we may begin the meeting. This is a third forum call. Good morning. This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles this Tuesday, October 3rd, the year 2000. I'm Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant President Pro Tem, serving as Presiding Officer today due to the excused absences of Council President John Ferraro and Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter. There are fifteen council districts in the city. We are currently being viewed by LA City View Cable Channel 35. This meeting will be repeated this evening at 7:30, as well as all meetings of the council being played on Sundays beginning at 10 o'clock. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Burnson, Chick, Fier Galanter, Goldberg Hernandez, Holder, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, really Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, eleven members present in the forum. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Since this is the first meeting of the month of October, we have the salute to the flag followed by the invocation. I would like everyone to please rise. Councilwoman Walters, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce Bishop Scott W. Sinclair. He's President of the Greater LA State, representing LA Interfaith Committee and the Reorganized Church of Latter-day Saints of Los Angeles. Bishop?
May we pray. All loving God, we have gathered this morning as citizens, elected officials, and employees of the City of Los Angeles to enact a part of the business of this great city. We pause for these few moments and ask for your blessing on this assembly, that we might be about creating a better community for all. We come from various backgrounds with differing interests, needs, languages, and points of view. We confess that none of us can adequately speak for the needs of every member of our community. We therefore ask that your spirit or presence may enable us to be sensitive toward the views of others, to listen to the spoken and silent cries of our people, and to seek for the common good for all in our conferring together. We gratefully acknowledge that despite the struggles of day-to-day life, that you have blessed our country and our city in many ways that our forebears would marvel at. May we use these blessings to be a blessing for others for your kingdom's sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop. Okay, Madam Clerk, first order of business this morning?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, without objection, minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, those are approved also.
Next item, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearings. Item number one is protest against proposed vacation Mulholland Drive in Council District Four.
Okay, we do have item number one before us. I believe this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on item number one? I have no speaker cards before me. Okay, seeing no one in the audience that wants to be heard on item number one, let's close the public hearing on item number one. Is there any council member that would like to be heard on item number one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number one and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, you have two confirmations of city officials. Item number six is confirmation of Barbara Ann Perkins through the Quality and Productivity Commission for the term ending September 6, 2003.
Okay, very good. Ms. Perkins, are you here? Yes, she is. If you would like to come forward and be seated at the center table. Chair recognizes Mrs. Chick.
With great enthusiasm and energy, welcome Ms. Perkins to the Quality and Productivity Commission that the Government Efficiency Committee especially works with. And while we don't have a long period of time ahead of us, about nine months, a lot can be done. And I know that what you bring to the table is not only very deep community experience, but organizational experience and institutional experience, all of which is going to be very helpful. I'll leave other comments up to, I know there's some other council members who claim you as their constituent, et cetera, but it's been a pleasure knowing you and working with you, and I'm looking forward to doing more of the same in this new role. Thank you. I recommend unanimous support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Yes, I rise in support of one of my constituents. I can vouch for her record as a community activist and being involved in virtually every phase of our 12th district community, and I think she'll be doing outstanding job. Thank you. Thank you for serving.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Burnson, I'm gonna have to fight you as to whose constituent she is, but I'd be more than happy to share her with... But, no, if you recall, colleagues, a couple of months ago, Barbara was before us as a woman of the year from the 7th district, and so it's indeed a pleasure and an honor to have her here before us as a candidate for this commission, and particularly when it comes to governmental efficiency and effectiveness. I can think of nobody better than Barbara to raise the questions and put the challenges on the table for us to all do better. So I look forward to her work and to her ideas and I'm sure recommendations that'll come before allowing to this full council on how to make the city better. Thank you.
Ms. Perkins from the chair, thank you very much for your willingness to serve the people of the City of Los Angeles. My compliments. Since there are no other council members that wish to speak, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number six and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, ma'am, and again, thank you on behalf of the people of the City of Los Angeles. Next item.
Item number seven is a confirmation of Terry E. Membrano to the Neighborhood, Board of Neighborhood Commissioners for the term ending June 30, 2003.
Ms. Membrano, if you could please come forward and welcome and good morning. Please have a seat. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Thank you. Ms. Membrano came to Government Efficiency Committee yesterday, and I'm very pleased to recommend her to the full council. I just expressed regret that I was sorry she wasn't at the very front end of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and its commission, but we certainly can use new energy and help, and she has a wonderful experience, background in social service agencies, working in the community, and has a master's in social work, which especially recommends her to me. So, colleagues, I recommend a unanimous vote, and again, I'm sure that her council member will want to speak on her behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I do stand in support of Ms. Membrano. We recommended her for this commission based on her experience of working in the district and working with those individuals who are basically disenfranchised and aren't a part of the system, so we hope that she brings that perspective to the commission, and so I ask for your support.
Again, ma'am, on behalf of the people of the City of Los Angeles, thank you for your willingness to serve the people. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number seven and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, ma'am, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Items two and three are public hearing items. Those items, the council should open the public hearing and continue the hearing and the ordinance to October 24th.
Okay, we are going to dispense with items number two and three at this time, and then I have a request from our colleague, Mr. Pacheco, to take up item number 27. So let us deal with items two and three at this time. Is there any persons in the audience that want to be heard on items number two and three? Two and three? Okay, seeing none, I believe the action that's necessary, Madam Clerk, is to continue the hearing and the ordinance until October 24th on both?
Yes, Mr. President.
Is there any objection by any council members to that action? Okay, seeing none, that will be the order on items number two and three. At this time, colleagues, Mr. Pacheco has requested that we take item number 27 out of order. Is there any objection to taking item number 27 out of order, which is an item in Mr. Pacheco's district? Okay, seeing no objection to taking this item up now, the chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco?
Madam, I always want to say madam because I'm used to seeing Ruth up there, but, Mr. President, colleagues, this is the matter in which we were discussing last Friday involving the property purchased by Ms. Marks for her son. Since that meeting time, the City Attorney's Office has been working with my office to understand exactly what our legal parameters are at this point. I was informed, and I did share this with Ms. Marks, that there are some legal impediments according to the city attorneys in terms of the motion. So at this point, for the record, I would request that the city attorney give us an update as to what the parameters are for our ability to act on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco, and I will hold your time. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item, what's happening is that, under the municipal code, it's a ministerial action that the Department of Public Works file the, and record the deed. Now, all this really does is it stops the interest accruing, and it holds our interest so that we are entitled to something on our lien. This was recorded in 1994, and the lien and the assessment, and therefore, it's our advice that this is something that has to happen, that has, that happens ministerially. What the council may want to do is, they may want to send this to committee, to Public Works Committee, and let the committee deal with the investigation of this and see if there's something, some compromise that they can come to at a future date. But today, right now, there is nothing really that the council can do. They don't really have jurisdiction to stop this issue.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Mr. Pacheco?
Because, as the city attorney has told us, we do not have jurisdiction or basically the power to stop this, and the proper course of action would be then to refer to a Public Works Committee so that the committee in my office can work with Ms. Marks to get to the bottom line of this in terms of what is equitable and fair in this situation. Obviously, with that opinion, I have no other option than to have this sent to committee at this point, and then we'll bring it up through the committee process.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise because I, I basically want to deal with what I think is a much bigger problem, that this is kind of one of the issues that's pointing it out to us. And the example I want to use is the California Hotel. It used to be on Sixth and Burlington. And we basically barricaded it on two separate occasions, the entire hotel, and we kept on getting fires there. Then the fire department said it was basically a hazard, a public safety hazard for the people living there, and we demolished the whole building. Now, that was about five years ago. And what I have today is a blank lot. Now, our liens on that property are over half a million dollars. The lot is not worth over half a million dollars. So meanwhile, the city attorney says we cannot do anything. I sit there saying we should foreclose on the property to collect on our lien. The reason I say we should foreclose is because the worst-case scenario is we end up with the property. Now, this is the problem. We only end up with the property after the lien in front of us gets paid. So they might end up with a property, because it's not worth what we're saying, unless we pay off the first. Now, if that first forecloses, which is what happens most of the time, and in this case, it was the county who sold it in an auction, they are entitled to recoup their money. There's nothing that says they have to recoup our money, because they're in line. And so the reason I'm pointing it out is throughout the city, we have lots that we have basically created. We, in the demolition and making them safe, we are placing liens, and then we add our interest in our administrative costs, that now make those lots, they're not, they don't do any good. So someone's gonna buy them in a foreclosure sale, in an auction sale, on a tax lien sale, and we lose out. If we would've showed up at that auction and bid our amount, we'd end up with a lot, and we'd have a lot that might be worth $21,000 for $130,000 worth of our lien. The reality, it's $90,000 that we spent on the assessment. So I'm just trying to explain it because it's not just this property that we have the problem with. It's on every property that basically is over-leveraged, that we have done our due diligence in trying to make it safe to the public, but it's no longer worth what it was worth when we basically took our action. So I'm just trying to explain it because that's a situation with a lot of pieces of property. And the city attorney, I think it takes state legislation for us to actually take action on a property owner. That basically is not paying us. And so a lot of these assessments go on the books, and this one, in this case, was recorded 1994.
That's right.
And they're there just forever.
Well, my recommendation in terms of what, if the council so desires to send it to committee, is that the committee can then look at this and see whether there is, whether they want to compromise the claim, and at that point, there may be something that they, we can come to. we can come to that is less than the 135, but within the range.
Mr. Pacheco, your motion is to send this item to Public Works Committee?
Yes, Mr. President, because it keeps the option of doing something good in this situation alive, and we will review it in committee, and I will work with the committee members and the departments to see what the appropriate resolution is to this matter.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
I want to look above this case. I think this is, whatever we do here will be precedential, and I think we have to be very cautious on how we proceed. I have no objection to going to Public Works, but I do have objections to make in special concessions to people, and because I think if we do it for one, we need to do it for everybody, and that's just not a good alternative. Obviously, there may be some questions about the price, what the values and so forth, and I think those things can be resolved in Public Works, then come back to the council, and maybe we can make some kind of resolution on this. But as far as gift to public funds, I've said it before, I don't care if it's your district, my district, whoever it may be, it's not something we should be doing in cases like this.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
As this matter, go to your committee, Mr. Pacheco. We should be mindful of the fact that the person who buys a lot of these properties at lien sale, auction, that the county puts on, I just had a case the other day where a person did not know that the condominium was no longer there, and there were three or four condominiums, and they just bought one of them, but we demolished them already. So here, they have a small piece of property. When they went out and took a look at their condominium, they discovered it wasn't worth it to pay the difference. So the initial payment to the county was $6,000 in this particular case, and since they didn't come with the rest of the money, they lost the $6,000. So that's a problem. We demolished it, sure, the buyer should check it out and see what's there and check the properties out, but thought it was such a good deal, they rushed to the auction, bought the property, and that was the consequences. So it seemed to me, at least, that if we're going to have a claim on a property, we should do it right away, or disseminate the information so the public will be given notice that that property they're buying is no longer the property that they think they're buying, and it's not there anymore, because it becomes a ripoff. And I think we need to have some guidelines and protection, establish a new policy, if you will, to make sure that the public is not taken advantage of, and they've got a lot of examples of that. They buy a little small piece of property where they can't build anything on it, because the code has changed and said you can't build anything, even though you bought the property. We sell it for that purpose, at least that intended purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair.
Mr. Chair, I just would like to clarify something. The Department of Public Works is recording the deed today. That means that the $135,000 plus is still on the records, still is due and owing the city. We are not relieving any of that by sending this to committee. All we're doing is looking at it and seeing if there is something that would be more fair and equitable if there was a problem, but that does not automatically mean that anything changes.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
I agree with what everyone said. I think the dilemma we face as a city is that many of these older buildings that are unsafe are in the inner city, and if we end up with a lien of, in the case that Mr. Hernandez raised, of $500,000, it makes that property unmarketable for development. And basically, you create blight when you have all these vacant lots because you have these huge city liens. And I also think that there's a way where it's, we can be a win-win situation in terms of working with maybe some CBOs and working with the property owners to get some development on there, and looking at our own system in terms of some forgiveness for those liens if we're actually going to put something that serves the greater public on those lands. But I think this raises a very important policy issue that we will look at, and we will work with the Public Works Committee, using this piece of property and using the other property that Mr. Hernandez raised as examples of what can happen in the inner city and how we don't want to continue the empty lots and the vacant lots in our neighborhood. So I think we're doing the right thing in looking at this in committee, because it still gives us an opportunity to forgive a portion or all if we think it's appropriate.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no other speakers that wish to speak on this item, the motion is to refer this to the Public Works Committee. Is there any objection by any council member to send this to Public Works? Seeing none, that will be the order from the chair. This is referred to Public Works. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items four and five.
Items number four and five are now before us. Is there any council member that wishes to be heard on items number four or five? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on items four and five and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Forthwith, next items.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items eight through 21.
Okay. Items number eight through 21 are now before us, colleagues. Are there any persons in the audience that want to be heard on items number eight through 21? Is it Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. You have cards on 18 and 20.
Let us call items number 18 and 20 special. Are there any council members that want to call any items special? Items eight through 21?
Number 17.
17, special by Mr. Hernandez?
I have a question on 12 and a question on 19.
Okay. Why don't we just, we'll call those special. 12 and 19 by Councilwoman Goldberg. Any other specials? Okay. What do we have as a balance, Madam Clerk?
Item eight through 21, with the exception of 12, 17, 18, 19, and 20, there's an ordinance on number eight, and that will go over for second reading on the 10th.
Okay. That'll be the order on that item. Let's open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved, with item eight going over one week, since we do not have 12 votes present for the ordinance. Next items, Madam Clerk.
Item on the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 22 through 27.
Okay. Item 22 is closed session, I believe.
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's hold those on the desk for the moment. And then we have items 23 through 27 that are before us. Are there any specials, council members? Items 23 through 23? Excuse me. Excuse me. Item 26 and 27, pardon me. Okay. Seeing none, would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Also, on the supplemental agenda, item 28 is mayor's veto. I believe that is to be received and filed.
Yes. I believe the governor has acted on that item, Mr. Holden. You still want to discuss it, Mr. Holden? Okay. Special by Mr. Holden. Let's go back to the beginning.
Item number 12 called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number 12.
I just wanted to know whether or not the worker retention and living wage were both being complied with. I know living wage was, but I want to just check on worker retention, since we had such a bad experience recently, and...
Let's have staff answer those questions for you. Staff, go right ahead.
Mark Adams, Department of Airports. These are new spaces that are currently not developed as...
Okay. So worker retention wouldn't even be involved yet?
That's correct.
But it will go into effect in these new spaces so that when, if and when the contract changes?
Yes.
And living wage has all been...
It is in the contract for that service contractor worker retention ordinance.
Thank you.
Applied.
Don't give us just a question.
Thank you very much. We do have, Mr. Holden, item number 12, wish to speak on item number 12?
Oh, this Host International, was this negotiated, or was it competitive?
Request for proposal process.
Yeah. All right. So you had more than one?
Yes.
It's competitive. So you got more money from this? Okay.
That was one of the criteria.
Okay. We do have item number 12 before us, colleagues. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no other council member who wishes to speak, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 12 and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith, next item.
Item number 17 called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, item number 17.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, there's been some confusion on this item, gone back and forth, and I just want to make sure that the motion is to remove it from the REAP program. And that would be my motion at this time.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez's motion is to clarify item number 17 and order the action that the council will consider is to remove the subject property from the REAP program. Are we to believe that that is indeed what is before us? If not, Mr. Hernandez moves that, and Councilwoman Goldberg seconds. Is there any council member that wishes to speak on item number 17 as articulated by Mr. Hernandez? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on Mr. Hernandez's motion and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith, next item.
Item number 18 called, excuse me, there's a card from the public on the item.
Okay. We have a few cards on this item. If the following persons, as I call your name, if you would please line up before the podium in the center, I would appreciate it, James Lafferty, Ta, is it Shui, Carol Richards, and George Wolfberg. Go right ahead, sir.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm James Lafferty, the Executive Director of the National Lawyers Guild in Los Angeles. In 1998, this council took a very fine moral stand when it passed a so-called selective purchasing ordinance prohibiting the city from contracting with companies doing business with the brutal regime now running Burma. Sadly, such laws were struck down by the U.S. Supreme Court. Happily, however, this council once again has a chance to take a moral stand on the issue of freedom and democracy in Burma, and this time, the chances of such a law being struck down by the court are extremely remote. Councilmember Goldberg and others ordinance would simply call upon the City of Los Angeles to divest itself of stock ownership in companies which invest in Burma, except those who sold businesses to provide health care or media-related goods and services. Every city should invest responsibly. What this ordinance does is say to the world that Los Angeles understands responsible investing to include a notion of supporting freedom and democracy when making investment decisions. But let's be clear, we are not suggesting, nor does this ordinance suggest, that in making investment decisions, the city should not be mindful of its fiduciary duty to invest its workers' pension funds profitably. But after all, there are many fine companies who do not invest in Burma, who pay as good or better a return on stock holdings as companies that do. Certainly, there is ample evidence to support the contention that investment strategies that pay attention to ethical concerns earn rates of return comparable to strategies that do not. Furthermore, it would be impractical for any company who invests in Burma to sue Los Angeles over its divestment, because it would be very difficult for any company to show that the value of its stock was adversely impacted solely by the City of Los Angeles' divestment. On this last point, I should mention that when the Supreme Court struck down the selective purchasing statute in Massachusetts, it did not rule divestment laws were unconstitutional, even though the plaintiffs in that lawsuit had asked it to do just that. Finally, I ask this council to pass this ordinance today. If you do, you will have the distinction of becoming the first governmental jurisdiction in this nation to take such action, and by your action, you will show this council to be a leader in the battle for an end to the brutal repression that now has Burma in its grip. I'm certain that the courageous people of Burma, both here and abroad, will applaud you for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shui?
Good morning, respectable ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dom Youshui. I'm from Burma. I was involved in the democracy movement in Burma 1988. I had to flee my country because of my involvement in the democracy movement. I'm still working to support the human rights and democracy movements in Burma. Today, a cruel, merciless, and tyrannical government rules our country. In our country, people have lost all the basic human rights on freedom of speech, freedom of press, and freedom of traveling. Those who give commands and expression were put into jail and tortured. That is why they should repeat from the evil ways of crumble. Now Burmese National League of Democracy leader Aung San Suu Kyi is again being held without communication under house arrest after attempting to travel outside Burma's capital Rangoon. Also, nearly 100 other NLD supporters, including Ute U, is believed to be under house arrest. The military hunter prohibits her from meeting with her party leaders and leaving Rangoon, which is a deep restriction of basic human rights. These events are adding more human rights abuses, and Burma today is still a country of terror and totalitarian control. The context for Aung San Suu Kyi call was as follows. The justification for economic involvement in Burma is that the presence will actually assist the process of democratization. Investment that only goes to enrich and already wealthy elite bent on monopolizing both economic and political power cannot contribute towards legality and justice, the foundation stones for a sound democracy. Business investment do not benefit the local people in the country, but support the military regime and the connections. Please be merciful to our Burmese people for achieving basic human rights and democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Richards?
Yes, I'm Carol Richards, co-founder of Burma Forum Los Angeles. Today, members of the Burmese community in Los Angeles are here in support of the new Burma ordinance to divest from stocks and companies doing business in Burma. We're glad that the city once again has an opportunity to go on record in support of human rights in Burma, as we did with the first ordinance, which, as we've said, passed unanimously and which we're very grateful for. Our action today is especially timely because the National League for Democracy Party is in the midst of another severe crackdown, as you've just heard from Da Shui. It's also time to send another message to Unical Corporation that the City of Los Angeles wants to dissociate from corporate behavior that knowingly supports violations of human rights. The federal court in Los Angeles recently found that Unical was aware of and benefited from torturous acts and forced labor during construction of the gas pipeline across southern Burma. Today, the city council motion also calls for the city to formally petition Congress to lift the federal presumption of city purchasing ordinances. Pending congressional action, the motion today would temporarily suspend the current ordinance on purchasing to conform with the recent Supreme Court ruling. We thank you all for your past support and for your ongoing concern for the people of Burma. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. George Wolfberg?
Mr. Chairman, and members, I'm a retired city employee. I was involved with the city's prior anti-apartheid program. I know that these programs are very effective, and I recommend that you approve this motion and send a message to the narcocrats that their brutal dictatorship is unacceptable.
Thank you, sir. I see no other speakers' cards, however, there are council members that wish to be recognized. I'd first like to recognize Councilwoman Goldberg.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, this is the next step. The city has already taken a stand on Burma, and this is a new approach, and I hope we will unanimously do now what we did before. Some of you may recall that Aung San Suu Kyi, who is the leader of the democracy movement, National League for Democracy, won a Nobel Peace Prize for... National League for Democracy, won a Nobel Peace Prize for those efforts. And this is a step that we can take, which is legal, even after the U.S. Supreme Court's actions. The regime is involved, if you're not aware of the local tie, with trafficking of heroin. The U.S. State Department believes that about sixty percent of all heroin in the United States is coming from Burma, and it is used to prop up this repressive tyrannical regime. And the problem is, is that now the crackdown on the National League for Democracy has begun again. And so it is my hope in bringing this, and Mr. Holden, who had considerable leadership in this issue the first time it came up, and Mr. Padilla, who was the other second, is to bring this to our attention, so that we take two actions today. One is, we have to suspend enforcement of our own administrative code from our previous action, but to request from Congress that they lift the federal preemption in this area. And secondly, to take the action, to ask the city attorney to submit an ordinance within fourteen days that would allow us to divest, direct the city treasurer to divest from the city's investment portfolio, all stock that the city has from companies that invest in Burma. And we exempt two areas. One is the area of health care, because health care is playing a positive role in Burma, those companies are. And the other area playing a positive role is the media, at least at this point. So we've exempted those two. And that would be my request, and I would urge another unanimous vote, so that we can join a growing number of cities across the country, who, after the Supreme Court decision, are thinking of what can we do next to put ourselves four-square on the side of the national attempt to gain democracy in this country.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Ms. Goldberg, you're right, I was an advocate for the ordinance as relates to the repression that's being conducted in Burma. However, and I did sign this motion, today I can vote for only one. There's one action and two action. The one is requesting Congress to take action to correct the problem essentially. But the second request is the city attorney to draft an ordinance today, and so we should conduct our business based on what the information is derived from the Investors Responsibility Research Center, those companies doing business in Burma. I'd like to have that part go to committee, and the reason why is that I would have, I would want them to make a list, as it goes into committee, my instruction would be, they make a list of all the companies that we would have to divest, stop doing business with, and that's fine, but it would give them an opportunity to come by and say, "Don't do it," but we're gonna do it anyway. But I'd like to have that list, so I know what I'm voting on and the consequences of it, and what would it mean for the investments. I have no problem doing that, but I think, I'm not prepared today to give you unanimous vote on the second action. I would think that that should be the action that would go to committee, and certainly I would vote for the one, and I would get it out to committee as quickly as possible, as soon as they would give us a list of the companies that can be affected by this. I think it's important for us to know, those companies that continue to do business with Burma, after we had already made a decision, at least this city, that that's something that we would not do. And notwithstanding, we've taken that action with that ordinance, and it's into right action to have taken, that these companies persist, and they continue to do the business with a repressive nation. So I would say that I want, from my knowledge, to have that paragraph go to committee. I wish you would go along with that.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Yes, I don't have any problem whatsoever in condemning what's going on over there. The only question I would have, and I supported the initial motion, if we are going to have a requirement that cities, that companies doing business with the city of Los Angeles not do business in Burma, then it involves a great deal of administrative cost to the city, and checking, and could result in a lot of problems as far as awarding of our contracts, and which would possibly be passed on in the way of higher costs to our taxpayers. I just wonder, what is the, and let me ask the city attorney, what is the situation as far, if we approve this today, what does that require us to do?
Mr. Burnson, I believe that the city council had already passed a Burma ordinance asking us not to deal with Burma.
I understand.
But the federal courts have asked us, have told us that we're preempted. This basically is asking for an ordinance--
I know what it's asking, but is it telling us that we have to examine every contract in every company that applies--
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. If that be the case, and this is a condemnation and urging everybody not to do business with Burma, that's fine. I just want to make sure what we're voting for, that we're not incurring a large cost to the city, which we've had in the past, in a good cause also. What's that? That we can't do business? That we can't do business? It doesn't say that? Okay. Well, if we are going to, you know, I would suggest, members, yeah, I would suggest, that if we are going to get into a situation where we have to be an investigative group of every single company that does business with the city, then we need to look at this a little more carefully before we approve it. I have no problem whatsoever with the condemnation, and I have no problem whatsoever with the city not doing any business with them, with Burma or Burmese companies that are part of that regime. But if we're gonna get into being a police officer for the economics of the, all companies throughout the world, I think we need to look at this a little more carefully.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, I wasn't gonna speak on this item, because I knew how I was gonna vote, and I didn't think it was important, but then, listening to some of the comments, it's not a question of policing all the companies of the world, it's a question of knowing who we're doing business with. I think that, again, we have systems in place that allow us to do that. And if we choose to do business with companies who basically are part of tyrannies and human rights violations, and basically the kinds of things that all of us claim we don't support, let everybody know. But at the same time, if we choose not to do business with those kinds of companies, let everybody know. I think this is not just a political question, it's a moral question. And I know for a fact that we have systems in place, because I was here as we reviewed those companies that were doing business with South Africa, and we had a system where we were aware of that. And the awareness basically gave us choices, and then we made those decisions as a council. So again, it's not a question of policing all the companies of the world, it's a question of knowing who we're doing business with, who we choose to do business with. And we have plenty of systems in place that allow us to do that. I think Ms. Goldberg's gonna provide a little bit more clarity as to what the motion actually does.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
Let me review the bidding. This is no longer about contracting for goods and services with the city. The U.S. Supreme Court overruled a state of Massachusetts law that was similar to the city's. So we're not, we can't do that anymore. We already agreed to that, but we aren't doing that anymore. What this says is instead is, the city has a portfolio of stock. If the stock of a company is a company that invests in Burma, we will sell that stock. It's the only action left to us, but it is a way of saying to businesses, and we don't have to do any research, that's what the Investor Responsibility Research Center is, that's who we use during the apartheid for their list, they do the research. If a company is doing business with Burma while all this is going on, making profits off of their business in Burma, we don't want to hold their stock, that's all this says. That's, there's no further action. That's a hundred percent of it. So I would urge, Mr. Holden, it'll take fourteen days for the ordinance to come back. We will ask the folks who are supporting this to get from the IRRC the list of stock we would have to sell, and you will have it before you have to take action on the ordinance. And so I would ask for an aye vote today, so that we can get the ordinance drafted, we will get the information before the ordinance comes back to council for a vote.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Yes, I feel a lot better if you have the information before us, listening to the companies that are doing business, and what it would represent in terms of divestiture, because it could be significant, and it could be insignificant, but at least we'll know, they'll have to identify those companies. And then, of course, you can make a selective choice henceforth, as to whether or not you wanna do other types of businesses with them. You don't need an ordinance to decide, "I don't want to give that contract to this, and I don't want to give that contract to..." You don't need that ordinance, but you're gonna find that you're gonna be supporting those companies, you're gonna be buying computers from those companies, you're gonna be buying software, hardware, from companies that are doing that business with Burma. I understand that, but if I don't like buying stock in the company, then I don't want to do anything to make that stock worth something. Okay? I know, I know, but--
[inaudible]
We do have an option. It doesn't have to be, you know, someone can stand up and say, "I don't want us to give that contract to that company," without even stating what the reason is. But I can tell you, you could very well generate some lawsuits. We have not got an opinion from the city attorney, as it relates to the Supreme Court's ruling on this matter in Massachusetts, as to whether or not this would be outside of that ruling. Would you want to comment on that?
Well, I believe Ms. Snowden is working on that, but we are preempted from the ordinance that we had previously. I don't believe that this would be a problem.
You don't believe?
No.
You don't have any evidence, though? Well, let me just put it this way--
Well, I did read the case.
Well, you read the case and make sure that we are not gonna make a mistake here, because, you know, we've got some other opinions where we didn't believe this and didn't believe that, we were sued and we lost. We don't want to get in a lawsuit over this.
We will make sure that before we draft the ordinance, that we check--
Okay, seeing no other council members that wish to speak, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on Councilwoman Goldberg's motion and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Colleagues, I need to advise caution, we are down to a minimum of ten members, which is the minimum necessary for a quorum, and so I just wanted to make that fact be known. In case anyone does need to excuse themselves, please bring that to the attention of the chair. Otherwise, government in Los Angeles, as we know it, will grind to a halt. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number nineteen, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number nineteen.
I really only had one question. I have no problem with an internet-based auction system, but if you don't have a computer and you're not on the internet, or you've now aced out of it, if we go to such a system, is really all I'm trying to find out.
[inaudible]
Okay, so, so how do you, well, okay, I guess I'll wait for the report, but my concern is, so when it goes to committee, you'll know, is how do you have an auction, maybe of people who are all on the internet bidding, and people who aren't on the internet, how do you know who has the best bid? And I just want to make sure that while I support us doing more and more electronically, we are not acing people out, because there are a lot of community-based organizations who rely on some of this surplus for things that they need. I don't want to make sure they get aced out if they happen to not be technologically astute yet and don't have a connection to the internet, and that's the only question I want to raise. What can I tell you? I have color now. We have color now in the Goldberg household. I want to tell you that. We do. We've come into the new era here. But, so, but that's, that was my question, is to make sure that that gets addressed, otherwise I have no--
Okay. Okay, we do have item number nineteen before us, with the suggestion of Councilwoman Goldberg being included in the report back to the committee. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak? Mr. Holden? Mr. Holden passes. Madam Clerk, would you please make a note of that for the record? Next item. Oh, excuse me, we do have this item. Item number nineteen, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item.
Item number twenty, called special, there are cards from the public on the item.
We do have cards on item number twenty. First, I would like to call those in favor of the proposal, and then those against the proposal. First, in favor, Mr. Rod Field, Mr. Field, I saw him, there he is.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. My name is Rod Field, I'm with the Los Angeles Housing Law Project. I'd just like to speak in support of the motion. In the past, we had tenant advocates aside to each and every building that was placed into the REAP program, and mainly that was because, without the advocates, it was very difficult to get the tenants to pay their rent into the city because of pressures put on by the slumlord, since these are REAP buildings, they are slum properties. I'd also like to address the letter that AGLA, Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, put out today. I think it's somewhat misleading in suggesting that we're creating a new program or radically changing the REAP program. In fact, these advocates have been on board for several years in most areas, not all areas of the city, and the fee that were proposed by this change is really not a change. That's the way the program was originally designed, somehow it got changed through administrative ways over the years. So there's nothing really new that's being proposed by this order, this change, I mean, this proposal, this motion today, and we'd ask your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Enrique Aranda. Mr. Aranda.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Before you today, I'm Executive Director of Inquilinos Unidos, and I'm here today representing not the special interests of property owners, but the interests of working poor families with the biggest housing crisis facing the city. I think the item in the motion before you today becomes also a moral question, a question of fair conditions, decent conditions in housing. I personally witnessed testimony after testimony of tenants that are threatened by property owners and coax into not paying or participating in the REAP program, and we have a proven track record of doing advocacy education and working with tenants, and I implore you to approve this motion and to face the biggest issue facing us today, being the issue of housing and the housing crisis facing the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Next, we have Hakamaneesh Mortesai. Sir, did I do that okay?
Pretty well. Thank you, Councilman, thank you, council. My name is Hakamaneesh Mortesai. I'm the Executive Director of the L.A. Center for Law and Justice, and I also urge you to approve this motion. We are a professional legal services organization, that worked in the city of Los Angeles for over twenty-three years. We're also prior contractors under this REAP ordinance. What we do when we go out to those buildings is we give advice and in terms, and provide education as to how this REAP process works, so that tenants can meaningfully take part in the process and voice their opinions. Oftentimes, when we're not there, tenants are forced by irresponsible landlords and slumlords into not participating in the program and to letting, and to not letting their feelings about the results and the conditions of their housing be known to the responsible government agency. However, a lot of those tenants are also people who do not necessarily speak English as a first language, and who may have limited education and limited experience in dealing with government administration and enforcement of housing standards. We are there to provide the education so that this program can be meaningful, and I urge you to approve this motion.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Harold Greenberg, James Fleck, Lisa Collier, and Ted Collier. Mr. Fleck, go right ahead, sir.
Yes, James Fleck, Jazz Core Research, representing the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Mr. Greenberg is in federal court this morning and was not able to make it. We submitted to you a revised copy of a letter which we gave you last week, dated October third. We think it should be made very clear, we are not opposed in any way to the educational program of alerting tenants to their rights and to help clear up the slum conditions that were present in Los Angeles. This is not what this motion is all about. this motion is all about. This motion comes about because between the day that a professional inspector from the Housing Department signs off on a property, perhaps often with a new owner, no longer the slumlord that, who, against whom the REAP program was originally intended, it gets to be 40 days by the time it reaches you. And in that period of time, sometimes there are problems. And the particular issue we have here is an intervention in which the tenant activists who are hired by the city would be given a virtual veto power, we think, over the decision of the professional who was the building inspector. Now, if there's something wrong with the building inspector's decision, you should do something about it. You did two years ago. You took it away from the Building and Safety Department and gave it to housing. If they're not doing a good job, maybe you should take it away and give it to somebody else. Maybe there are problems there. Whatever it is, we think this ought to go to committee. We're only here to speak on the process. We don't think that this public hearing this morning, without any reports from the city attorney, without the department speaking of the problems it's come up with, without the CLA or the CAO involved, is appropriate. We say, "Give the contract to the two groups that are here." We think that's fine, but send the rest to committee so that the issues can be examined in detail and, and really fair solutions found. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Collier, Mr. Collier also.
Good morning. I'm here to oppose this motion. Similarly to Mr. Greenberg, we don't have a problem with tenant advocates being out there and advising the tenants as to their rights and how the process works. What I do have a problem with is what comes into place upon the property being found to be in compliance by Building and Safety or Housing Task Force. At this point, it is an unnecessary and, I think, improper extra step to give the tenants any power to veto or to give them extra time to be consulted with at that point. They already are provided with written notice that the property is up to be taken out of REAP, and they have opportunity to be heard on that issue in front of the REAP Committee or City Council. Putting this power in the tenants' hands at that point in the process, where a property owner has put money into the property, sometimes not been the, the party to cause the conditions, but merely to come in and clean it up, I think that this discourages private investors from putting money into properties in Los Angeles. And I think at that point in the process where the Housing Task Force has found the property to be compliant, that should go per se without room for objections. And at that point, I believe that would be a violation of the property owner's due process, as it would be a new taking of their property and possibly an unfair business practice by the city as well. Secondly, the motion is somewhat vague as to the way it's written right now. It is unclear as to what impact the tenant's statement would have on the City Council's decision to remove the property from REAP, whether that would be a veto stamp, whether a stamp of approval is required. It is just not clear, and it does provide for an opportunity of abuse. When the tenants, often having the property removed from REAP increases their rent, it is in the tenant's best interest to delay that process longer. There's no timeframe here as to a deadline for these tenant advocates meeting with the tenants, and I'm concerned about that as well. Also, what isn't in this motion, and I'm not privy to the past actions, is where that $25 fee comes from. Is it taken out of each unit's rent in addition to the $50 administrative fee?
It's included.
It is included from that fee. Okay, thank you. Those are basically my objections. I think that it gives way too much power to the tenants at a time when the property owner has already proven themselves and has done everything that's required under the law, and that this step is not required nor necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Collier.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the council. My name is Ted Collier, and I have, over the last three years or so, have been responsible for rehabbing some 500 substandard units in the City of Los Angeles. Most of them had been cited as Task Force buildings. We came in, purchased the properties, and completely rehabbed those properties, and along the way, these were some of the most gang and drug-infested neighborhoods in the city. We've worked with, with tenants, we've worked with some tenant advocacy groups in the process. We certainly have been given no special treatment by anybody in the city, and we've worked with housing, with Slum Housing Task Force and Building and Safety, as well as with REAP Committee members throughout this process. As far as Slum Housing Task Force or Housing Department citing a building as having been unsafe or not meeting code, I think their credibility is in question here as to their sign-off of the building once, in fact, it has met code. And if they can't sign off finally and to get the building out of REAP upon completion, then I think we need a different process for citing those buildings as having been substandard in the first place. We have provided many, many, as I said, hundreds of safe newly renovated dwelling units, mostly in the first district, first council district. We have not taken a nickel's worth of either city money, state money, or federal money. We have also gotten no recognition, not that we're looking for that, but we have not so much as gotten a visit from any council member here to see how housing can be improved in the city by private enterprise and by cooperation instead of, of having a confrontational approach, as we've seen in many different cases. I do think that Building and Safety has raked us over the coals in a lot of cases in Slum Housing Task Force, and we have complied with every single request and requirement that they've thrown at us. And along the way, we've, we have developed a decent working relationship, I think. In some of these buildings where we've come in and purchased the buildings, we have been threatened with prosecution by the city attorney's office just as soon as we walked in the door. You know, it'd be great if I could wave a magic wand and, and have a building comply within, in a week or two weeks, but the truth of it is that for the most part, these are buildings that have been standing since the mid-1920s, and they need complete rehabilitation, and that's exactly what we've been doing. And we continue that process. I think this proposal that's before you today, I think is a, a method, and I think it sends a message to property owners who may be looking to do the same things as we are. I think it's a proposition that would cause abandonment of properties once the, the decision is placed in tenant hands and tenant advocacy hands. If we're going to ask the tenant the question, "Once that building is redone, would you prefer to pay more rent or less rent?" I can tell you that I have had as much as $100,000 worth of damage in a single building prior to a Task Force sign-off, because the letter had gone out that, that the building was going to be taken out of REAP. I have had people stuff toilet paper in the sinks on the fourth floor and turn the water on for 24 hours before it was recognized. I have seen buildings that were fine on Friday afternoon, and by Monday morning, you wouldn't have recognized it, including fire life safety equipment that was torn down, fire exit signs that were torn down, a gang graffiti throughout the hallways by the time someone called me, and this wasn't in one of our buildings. Some of this damage was in, in our buildings. So, I have seen what happens. I know that Housing Department and Building and Safety are kept to a standard. There is a code by which we can go and we can adhere to, and we can agree, or we can disagree on some items, but we can, we can discuss them and we can reach conclusions. I think if we're handing over control to tenant advocacy groups in the final analysis to tenants, I think we have a serious problem, and I think it's a proposal that would, that would certainly diminish the housing stock in Los Angeles. And I, that's about all I have to say. One more item, if I may, off of agenda with regard to housing, is that a number of properties within the central Los Angeles district that I have seen having been downzoned over the past several years from either R5 to R4 or to R3, and I know personally that a number of developers that may have had an interest in developing those parcels have been kept from doing so because it's no longer economically feasible in an R3 zone, for example, to build an apartment building. I think that may be something that perhaps in future discussions we can look at. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask the Housing Department to please take the center table because there were some questions that were asked by public speakers that I think that would be appropriate for the Housing Department to answer, and then we'll go into council members' questions.
Gary Penny, General Manager of the Housing Department, Mr. President, members of the council. On going down the motion, we have funds for the two contracts that are recommended in item number one of the motion. We had a contractor go out of business, and these are the next two on the RFP list selected through that process. On item number two, that item, we do not have funds budgeted at that time. We've had some very preliminary discussions with the city attorney's office about the issue of there's a potential conflict on that. City Attorney has indicated that they need additional time to review that. The other items are, the inspections would be signed off by the inspectors or incertified. Our understanding is that the tenant groups would assist the tenants in identifying code violations and that, helping them to communicate that to the inspector, but the inspector would be doing the final inspection and the sign-off. I might add that we've changed our protocol for the REAP buildings. We're keeping very detailed pictorial files now. We haven't done that in the past. We are now.
I recognize this, Councilwoman Goldberg.
Well, isn't it true, Mr. Penny, that in 1994 January, when the program was improved the first time, it included a $25 per unit stipend for contractors when the unit was signed up for REAP?
That's correct.
How did you pay for it then?
We, it was paid for by an appropriation that was reimbursed by the $25, I believe.
Wasn't it out of the $50 administrative fee?
It was a separate allocation of the Rent Stabilization Trust Fund.
So, it wasn't out of the $50 administrative?
Well, it was, it could, but it could be a reimbursement basis. It could be an appropriation, and the allocation would be a reimbursement.
Okay. Well, here's the problem, council members. Problem is, is that we have so many inspections with so many folks that in the area that I represent, where we have a lot of slum properties, it takes active cooperation by the tenants, most of whom are not English-speaking, to point out the issues that maybe an inspector might not see, because it wasn't on the original list of problems that originally put the building into REAP. And so, what we're having, and you would have to admit, I hope, that we have identified some units that people have signed off on that really shouldn't have come out of REAP.
I believe that that's happened both with our department, and that's a quality control issue. I'm, I don't think it happens all the time, but it has happened.
And I'm not asserting that, to be sure.
And I think it's happened a few times with the Task Force, which is Building and Safety people.
Right, right. No, no, it had much more there, but it's still happening, and it's happening, it has happened in recent weeks in, in my district, which is, and I believe in Mr. Hernandez's district, and it has led us to want to add an additional opportunity to make sure that we can get tenants involved before the sign-off occurs. And we think it will take reinstituting of the stipend that used to be in the program in January 1994. However, I hear an unreadiness to deal with that issue, and so I will ask that item two go to the Housing Committee. Not because I don't support it and think it's absolutely necessary, but I don't want to hold up the contract with Inquilinos Unidos and the L.A. Center for Law and Justice. But I will tell you that this is not an easy problem. This is a very thorny problem. We have a very large number of folks who flip buildings every time they're about to get caught. And I'm sure, Mr. Savornich, knowing your district a little bit as I do, I suspect you have a few of those slumlords yourself. They get right to the point where they're being prosecuted, and suddenly they aren't the owner anymore. And then, everything starts over from the beginning, and they get right to the edge, and they're about to be prosecuted, and suddenly they're not the owner anymore. And then, the new owner looks at you, even though the new owner is really the old owner with a new name, and looks at you and says, "Well, how can you prosecute me? I just got the building. I'm the good guy. I'm going to fix it up. Give me more time." Meantime, people are living in substandard conditions and paying high rents. That's what we're trying to stop.
Yes.
I know that's what you're trying to stop.
I believe.
I believe that the program that, that existed in 1994 helped you do that, and I don't think there's any danger in reintroducing it. But since there is concern about where would the money come from and how would it work, I'm willing to send just item two to committee and ask the rest be supported today, and I will ask Mr. Pacheco to calendar it as soon as possible, because I think it's necessary, but I want to give you all the assurances of what the various mechanics are for paying for it and for carrying it out before we take action on it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Bernson.
Yes, obviously, I have one problem with this, and it is the fact of the, the sign-off by the, by the tenants, because that constitutes a delay and a problem. I think there's something wrong with the system where our inspectors cannot thoroughly go through a building before it's released and sign off that everything is done, not just the things that were listed, but the entire building. And I think that's the process that should be gone through. Unfortunately, I, I did specially listen to the last speaker, and I recognize the fact, and I think I have been probably on the cutting edge of trying to get some of these substandard housing into compliance and improved, but I'm concerned that there may be a chilling effect if we put something in the process that will discourage people from investing and doing the right thing in these things. So, I'm prepared to support every other part of this. I think four, we need to look at a little more. I would hope that that could go to committee also, and that we could find a way to deal with that. And by the way, Jackie, you know, when that, when that old dealer, when that old owner signs off and you get a new owner, and we're going to prosecute, we ought to prosecute the old owner who got it there. Well...
We do, of course, say, "How long have you been building it?"
Well, then, that doesn't matter. They allowed it to get, they owned it and put it in that, allowed it to get in that condition. And I don't know if there's anything in the law that prohibits us from doing that. We should prosecute, and, and a new owner that comes in should be given a period of time. Remember, the thing's still going to be in a, in a REAP situation. They should be given a period of time in order to try to clean up the mess, and that should be monitored very carefully. So, I was very disappointed that part of the ordinance that you and I, that you and I authored on the 72-hour situation that is not being enforced by Building and Safety, and I, and I want to talk to the Housing Department and Building and Safety as to why, when they say that having heating in a building is not considered an emergency. I mean, there's something wrong with our, with our Housing Department and Building and Safety if they're unable to enforce and inspect properly these buildings. And, you know, I, I don't think the process, the problem is in this process, Jackie. I think the process is there with our Housing and our, and our Building and Safety Department. I, I would hope that we could find some kind of ability to not discourage investment in these properties by identifying people who are legitimate new owners and not immediately prosecuting somebody that comes in that, in fact, is not the old owner or associated. There seems to be something wrong with that process. And obviously, having the, having the tenants decide whether a building should come out of REAP is like having a jury that's all on one side that's already made up their mind. They're never, you know, many times, they're never going to be satisfied. I think that that has to be someplace else. And, and I do appreciate the fact that you want to get them involved, and I just wonder at what part of the process should that be, whether it's before the sign-off to delay a sign-off or where. So, I would ask that, one of two things. I would hope that this could go, four would also go to committee, and maybe we can make some determination on that. And if we can't, if, if that doesn't go to committee, I, I have some reservations. And if we can't, if that doesn't go to committee, I have some reservations about supporting it in its present form. I do support the concept of that outreach. I do support the concept of getting the input from the tenants, but not necessarily in delaying a sign-off and which point it should be at. It should be probably prior to the building inspector coming in and doing a complete inspection of the building and making sure that not only the things that were noted, but the things, but everything in the building is up to par.
Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
I think for the most part, the Housing Department is in catch 22, and the landlords who take care of their property is also in the catch 22, and the ones who are not well-intending, they do what they do, and that's why matters like this are before us. And sometime, they just give up. It says, "I've had enough of this, and I'm gonna walk on this property." Now, we have some properties in my district, I mean, those old stocko, multiple units apartments, absolutely gorgeous. I mean, just where anybody would want to have lived eight, 10 years ago, but today you go there and it's a slum. Now, why is it a slum? The building didn't destroy itself. It's a slum because the tenants mistreat the property. Landlord throws his hands up and he walks. Now, it seemed to me that we should have some organizations, Ms. Goldberg, who can provide some education, proper education, for the individuals who are coming, who are gonna be living there, about how to be good tenants, how to identify landlord is not a good landlord, report him right away. I have no problem with that. But the opinion of swing both ways, she would never learn on this issue because it supports landlords and tenants. Okay? The fact of the matter is that the manager said that he's put a lot of money into his property, he's gonna get out of REAP. When he goes there, one week later, I don't know who tell these people, "Stop up the toilet." So he'll stay in REAP. There may be an advantage for that to happen also. That's a bad situation where tenants are involved. Of course, we know that's a bad situation where landlords are involved. They trade the properties off. They decided, "We're gonna beat the system now because the system is against us." Personally, I would not own multiple housing units in the city of Los Angeles. If I did, I wouldn't rent them. I let them go vacant. And for that reason, the house wouldn't hurt itself. Just be vacant, voted up, I painted inside, painted outside, and say, "Hey, that's the way it is."
You couldn't tear it down, totally, no.
No, no, no. You couldn't tear nothing down if I kept it up and maintained it. But that's just the way I feel about how landlords are treated. That's the way I see how some tenants are treated, and one bad, too bad, don't make it right. Two wrongs don't make it right. And that's what I see here. Now, I'm with, I think part of it should go to committee. Maybe all of it should go to committee and debate it. But I must tell you that we're not gonna get any housing to the extent that we need as long as we just side with one side against the other. We need an educational program for tenants, for the ones who are here, for the ones who are coming here, to explain, the whole brochure, a plan says, "Here's what a tenant does here."
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Here's how a tenant complains.
Mistress Savornich.
Savornich, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I just have a couple of questions because I think we are moving in the right direction. I just want to make sure that good property owners are not subject to unfair or undue treatment and that bad property owners are held accountable to the full extent of the law. One of the things that I want to ask is that on item number three of the motion, it says, number three, instruct the Los Angeles Housing Department to temporarily cease processing removals from REAP to council for occupied buildings until tenant contractors have been deployed to the subject properties. What does the Housing Department define the deployment to achieve?
It would be a tenant outreach to have the tenant groups talk to the tenants about any violations that may have been missed in the inspection process so that we can deal with those.
Okay, so let's walk it through real time here. A building and safety inspector goes out.
A housing inspector.
A housing inspector, excuse me, goes out and has a list of violations.
That's correct.
That needed to be cleaned up.
That property then has gone, there's been noncompliance if it's in REAP, it's gone through a general managers' hearing, and so this is not the normal property owner. This is the exception to start with.
Okay, so now, let's say that the property owner complies or has complied with all of the violations that the housing inspector had. Prior to your recommendation that the property come out of REAP, one of the tenant advocacy contractors would have to also sign off on the housing inspector's list?
No.
Okay, then tell me where we are then. Tell me what the tenant contractor's relationship then is with the Housing Department's inspector to allow the removal?
In the future, the tenant group would go out and contact the tenants as we go through the REAP process. The inspector is certified, has to sign off on the property. The tenant groups cannot. They would identify any additional noncompliant items that may have been missed in the inspection or the tenant hasn't brought to the attention of the inspector. But the inspector would sign off on the property when those were corrected. And again, we've started a whole new process of a pictorial file on all of our inspections.
Okay, so then what would happen, because my time is running here? So the tenant advocacy groups would inform the inspector that there are some other items that need to be corrected, but those corrections not necessarily would hold up the property being removed from REAP. What those items that the tenant advocacy groups would bring to the housing inspector's attention would be, the inspector would then issue, if the inspector chose to do so, a notice to comply, correct?
Correct.
Or would it hold up the property coming out of REAP?
Thank you, Mistress Savornich.
It may hold up the property coming out of REAP. If it was not in the original order and it was a valid violation, then it would, the property would still remain in REAP.
How about if it wasn't on the original order?
If it wasn't on the original order but was a valid violation that the inspector confirmed, then it would stay in REAP until it's corrected.
Thank you, Mistress Savornich. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I rise with a clear understanding that I have over 1,600 REAP cases in my district. 1,600 is more than Ms. Goldberg has, it's more than Mr. Savornich has, it's more than any other person has on this council. I understand that when a tenant pays the rent to the department through REAP, the bottom line is that landlord is no longer receiving that revenue during that period of time. And if that landlord is paying a mortgage and paying utilities and basically having to make repairs, it all has to happen at the same time. I clearly understand that, which is one reason why I'm not a landlord, because I've, my mom was a landlord and she had tenants. And I can share with you that they're very good tenants, and every now and then you'll get a bad tenant. And I understand that difference, and that's why I take REAP very serious. My goal is to have my buildings habitable before they go into REAP, and we shouldn't lose sight of that. But once they go into REAP, we should do everything we can to make sure it gets out of REAP as soon as possible. I think part of what spurred the motion by Ms. Goldberg was the fact that her staff, like my staff, was going out to review buildings that were going out of REAP. And what we found is the tenants and we found the buildings still had violations, and Housing was recommending them, we remove them from REAP. I have a particular staff person who used to work for Building and Safety, worked for Housing, and I said, "How could that be? How could Housing be telling us it's good enough to take it out of REAP, and yet we have these violations?" And when my person went back to review some of those cases, what he found out is some of those violations were not either part of the original orders or were, basically became violations after the inspection to remove them. Now, I'm trying to clear that up because we tend to react by introducing a motion. And I think that what we want to do is make sure we have a program that works for both sides. Because if it works for the landlords and we know the buildings are habitable, it works for our tenants. But if it's not working, is when we have a problem. And that's what the question marks are about today. I need to know, Mr. Penny, when was it that we found out the Southern California Housing Association was not gonna be one of our contractors?
Sure. A month and a half ago.
A month and a half ago. And so for a month and a half, we haven't had an outreach team. Is that true?
No, we have Inner City Law Center as a contractor right now on board.
But is he only, is he working the whole city? They're working the whole city?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, well, that's part of the problem.
If you want a few more seconds, that's not...
Yeah, well, I just want to point out that that's part of the problem. We haven't had enough outreach people doing that part of the educating. And hopefully, this will resolve. The second question is, where do we get the $25? And I know Ms. Goldberg agreed that that go to review, but we really should try and straighten it out today so that everybody knows when it comes back, the funding will be there.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Did you want to answer the question about the source of the $25?
As part of the REAP process, the tenant can pay into the REAP program, pay their rent into the REAP program. The city keeps a $50 per unit, per month administrative fee. The $25 would be one half of that $50 that's collected each month.
So the city, just to be clear, the city would only get half of the administrative funds that it would otherwise get?
That's correct.
What does it cost the city to administer the program?
I don't have those figures, but we can certainly provide those. We don't cover the cost with the $50 administrative fee if that's where we're going here.
Okay. Ms. Goldberg.
You know, I will send two and four to committee and ask that we approve the rest of it today, but I just want to reiterate, there is no veto by the tenants, even if there's a $25 stipend.
Of course.
There is no veto. The only people who decide whether a property goes into or out of REAP are the inspectors.
That's correct.
There is no veto. So the fact that it's in somebody's letter to you that it's a veto doesn't make it so. There is no veto. Am I correct or not?
That's correct. The inspector has...
There is only one decision-maker. That's the inspector.
That's correct.
What we're trying to do is to accept the reality that in the worst buildings in the city, we have a lot of tenants who don't know their rights and who may not have the same language as the inspector. And so these advocacy groups, when it goes into REAP, helps them understand what's happening, and when the department wants to take it out of REAP, gives them an opportunity to communicate with someone in their own language who can tell the inspectors, "We don't think this building's ready to get out of REAP." That's the most they can do. There is no veto. There never was. We're not proposing it now. And when it comes back from committee, it still won't be proposed as a veto. But we need this extra step because there is a disconnect between class and income and language of the tenants and many of the building inspectors and these advocacy groups, which are supported by the department. The contracting with them is the solution the department came up with when we had this dilemma. So this is not against the department. This is saying, "We think that we ought to be going back to the full program, which provided some additional funding to those advocacy groups so they can make sure to be at all of the various buildings that needed to be visited prior to the decisions being made." However, having said all of that, I'll still take items two and four and ask Mr. Pacheco to, I serve on the committee, to do it expeditiously, and they come back with a full report on that part of it later. But I urge you to do the rest of it, and I will urge you again to do this part of it too when it comes back.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Mr. Hernandez, were your questions answered?
Yeah, I just, I agree with Ms. Goldberg's motion of the separation. On item three, could we have a report back in 60 days on your item three, the moratorium?
Oh, sure.
In 60 days so that we know where...
Once the contracts are done, there shouldn't be a moratorium. Just until the contract's...
We can provide a report in 60 days.
Okay, I just want, well, I'm willing to say 30, and I just want it done so that it moves.
We'll do it.
Okay.
All right. So we have before us items in the motion, items one, three, and five, as amended by Mr. Hernandez's request, with items two and four to be sent to committee. That's the action proposed. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That'll be the order. Next item, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, you have item 22 and 28. I think we should take up item 28 because 22 is a closed session. We can dispose of it very quick.
Yes, item 28 would be next, Mr. Holden.
Twenty, 28?
Twenty-eight. As you requested, item 28 would be next, and then we'll recess in a closed session. Okay, we do have item number 28 before us. Mr. Holden, would you like to be recognized on this item? Would you like to be recognized, Mr. Holden?
Yes.
If you would push your button, please.
Well, I'm gonna ask him to tell us, give us the status report on the strike. He's been the one, the prime negotiator, and before I push my button, begin to speak.
Okay. Jaime de la Vega, Assistant Deputy Mayor. Mr. Chair, is that a properly agendized item?
Yeah.
The discussion of the strike?
What is in front of you, Gail Weingard, Assistant City Attorney, what is in front of you is the urging of the governor to sign SB 1101, which clarifies and preserves the collective bargaining right. And I believe that item would be moot because the governor's already acted on it.
Well, that's all right, but I think it's still worth noting in why we took the action initially in the first place, Madam City Attorney. And the reason why I raise the point is because we did more than one thing. We also asked the mayor to go back and continue negotiation. We had discussion with the mayor, mayor's office, not with you, but you were over there, you know, digging your holes into the sand, your heels into the sand, and we are where we are today when the mayor was in Europe. And that was a real major problem for negotiations in order to sell this strike. You gotta be sensitive to the needs of the individuals who are on strike as well. And just because we're in position of power and influence, that doesn't mean that we're gonna bring them to their knees and whip them and make them be submissive. They will never do that. They will never be submissive to your power, to my power, my influence, anyone else's. SB 1101 was designed to, if it had been acted into law, would take away the rights and benefits of all those establishing new zone. You use that as a leverage over the strikers. You use that as a leverage, saying that you come back to work on our attorney with reduced rates and benefits, or if this goes into effect, this is in fact what we'll do. That's the implied action on your part. Turns out that we asked the mayor to support the motion by the majority of the council, asking the governor to sign SB 1101. And of course, the mayor didn't do that. I kind of warned him that the governor was gonna sign it anyway. So now, and we also asked him to go back to the negotiating table, which he has done. We can compliment him for that. He's there today, he was there last night, doing just that. Your role as a negotiator, I don't know. You say you gotta go back to Pasadena. I don't know what contribution you can make with the elected officials fired from the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
You have the mayor and others.
Well, since you didn't push your button, Mr. Holden, I've been having to watch it by the clock here. Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Chair recognizes Mr. Bernson.
Yes. Unfortunately, the governor acted in spite of the needs of the San Fernando Valley, and he has precluded any real possibility of an independent zone for the San Fernando Valley. Those of you that were told that this was gonna settle the strike, now you know that it wasn't gonna settle the strike. I just, I'm just very, very, very sad that the governor has not taken into consideration the needs for providing better transportation for the San Fernando Valley and that opportunity. And that could have been done through negotiations as well to also protect the rights of the workers. It was never the intention of the board to take away the benefits that have, some of the benefits that have been enjoyed by the workers in the past, even though some of those were way out of line with any other government or any other type of organization that you can find. But it was, in fact, subject to something that could have been negotiated, and there was a proposal to extend for three or four years those same benefits to a new zone, and they could have been negotiated with their, with the union at the termination of that period for whatever contract they would have, which is similar to what we have at the MTA. We negotiate a contract every three years. The governor was insensitive to the needs of the San Fernando Valley, and I hope that Valley people will remember that.
Thank you, Mr. Bernson. The Chair recognizes Mr. Hernandez for the first time.
In members of the council, I reached the realization that the city of Los Angeles is a working people's city.
is a working people's city, and that the people impacted by the strike, as well as the people who are involved in the strike, as well as the people who are trying to resolve it, are all working people. And I think it's important that we try and make that happen as soon as possible for the good of the city. I just urge all the parties today to try and make it happen. Yesterday, there was a study presented at the regional level of SCAG in regards to a housing summit that clearly showed that the population base that makes $10,000 or less has been constant over the last 20 years. But it's a huge population base. And the second base that's losing in terms of its buying power is that population base that's making $40,000 or less. And the third one that's losing is that population base that's making $70,000 or less. In other words, $70,000 today is buying you about $60,000 worth of income. And that is the reality of our economy. The only population base that can basically claim an increase, an increase, is that population base of over $100,000 a year in salary. I'm sharing it with you because it's impacting the ability to buy housing. It's impacting the ability to get to work. It's impacting the healthcare system. And so when we're talking about bus drivers, whose buses are twice as big as our dash buses and carry twice as many passengers and maybe five times the distance, it's an issue. In the year 2000, it's an issue. And that's why we have these issues going on in the city. But it's not just a question of what's happening in the Valley. It's a question of what's happening in a region. And the fact that people are being able to buy housing in areas that have no jobs and having to go to areas where there are jobs but not making the kind of income that allows them to have a decent quality of life. And that's why we're dealing with these issues today in Los Angeles. So I just urge all the parties to understand those demographics and come to some agreements, and let's move on because it's all about working people.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a second time.
I pushed my button once, but that's all right. I just want to respond to Mr. Burnson and also to the city attorney. City attorney, I just want you to understand, this is an issue that I felt should be discussed. And I think representing the city attorney's office, you play your politics one way and I play mine another. I want you to understand that. I understand that it's moot, and I will move after I finish speaking then to go receive and file. But these are discussions that should take place, given the fact that this strike is in the 17th, 18th date. People have lost their jobs because they can't get back and forth to work, whereas people play politics and negotiate egos and egos only. Sure, if you're going to have a Valley zone, understand that. But you can't take away the rights of the worker and balance the budget on the backs of the drivers. You require, as a board member, Mr. Burnson, you require that the drivers work overtime. That's part of the policy. If they refuse to get to work overtime, they are punished for it. You require that. And as it relates to a zone, the people in the Valley, East LA, South Central, are all suffering. The businesses are suffering. Every day we stay, and we'll never make up the laws. Well, we'll never make up the laws. So the fact of the matter is that it behooves us to solve this strike. You're not going to win. The city's not going to win. You're a deputy mayor, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you represent all the people of this city. You want a speedy resolution of the problem and not on the backs of the worker.
Chair recognizes Mr. Fuhrer. If there were a previous question, I move it. Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
The mayor and I both agree with Councilman Holden that this strike needs to be settled as quickly as possible, but I want to address some of the misconceptions about the zone. The zone is being pursued in order to save money in the MTA's overall transit operations. By doing so, there will be more money for expanded bus service, both in the San Fernando Valley and in other parts of the city. That is why the zone is important to the whole city. You are also aware that the MTA is facing an operating budget of half a billion dollars over the next 10 years. What that means is if the MTA is not able to reduce costs through better management and reduced overhead through zones, MTA will be cutting bus service in as early as three years, and that affects the City of LA in particular because 73% of all boardings occur within the city's boundaries.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The previous question has been moved. However, Councilwoman Goldberg has requested to speak. Mr. Fuhrer?
I'm sorry. I didn't request to speak, but I feel a need. You know, I mean, it...
Ms. Goldberg, before you begin, I just want to caution all of my colleagues. The item that is before the council is the mayor's veto message.
I understand.
Okay, so...
I understand, but the justification for the veto was that we want to reduce costs. And everybody wants to reduce costs. I think that's a wonderful goal. But, you know, when we think of reducing costs by efficiency, we think of having a better routing system, using better management techniques, reducing how much it costs to clean a bus. But it's not entrepreneurial genius to say we're going to reduce costs by simply reducing the amount of money the drivers get paid. That's not genius of any sort whatsoever. And, you know, we always want to talk about this as if it were like magic to reduce costs. Well, you know, I think there are ways to reduce costs in systems, and they should all be explored. But I don't think you start with by saying, "Well, we could have more buses if only the people who run them, clean them, drive them, and make sure that they're mechanically safe would just simply make less money next year. Then we could have more buses." This, to me, is not a solution. You don't ask the people who are doing the work to subsidize the system.
Okay. The other thing I would like to remind my colleagues, that the item before us is also moot and that the governor signed the legislation. So what we have before us is the override of a mayoral veto to which the governor has already taken action. So now, I will recognize Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. And although the technical aspect of the item before us may be moot, given the governor's signature over the last weekend, I think the issues are very much still relevant and important and significant because the strike continues to go on. And tied into the strike and the negotiation, as is evidently clear to all of us, has been the issue of this proposed transit zone. And so I just want to remind all of us once again, if you can take a look at the LA Times this morning, you'll recall that the consultant gave a presentation to the interim Transit Zone Board a couple of months ago that said a transit zone still could work if you kept the labor agreements in place. And so we're looking at trying to achieve cost efficiencies, not on the backs of working men and women, but yes, in upper management, yes, in administrative overhead. And if the mission and intent of having pursued the transit zone concept was to improve bus service, to add bus service, and if we're truly committed to that goal, then we need to continue to pursue that effort. Now, I know we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about what does this mean, whether we continue to remain one city or not, or two-tier level of services, and we had to take those into consideration. But for the time being, there's still an interim board in place that can continue to meet and do work. And so the statement I want to make here today in this conversation is to ask the mayor, and you can be the one to carry this message, to do what he can to make sure that all the City of Los Angeles representatives continue to push for additional meetings, additional work towards a transit zone type of model that can achieve these efficiencies and savings that can in turn be reinvested into better and improved service. And whatever successes can and are achieved in the San Fernando Valley, I'm sure, will be looked at as a model for improvements and efficiencies to be implemented elsewhere.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also appreciate your reminding us and clarifying what the item is, and it is moot in terms of the veto. But I am rising because of the statements made by the mayor's deputy and want to join with my colleagues in clarification because there's been a spin put on the recent signing of legislation by the governor to make it appear as though it's that legislation that completely destroys the possibility of a San Fernando Valley transit zone. And I, along with others, very strongly disagree with that. And there was something in a recent article that I wanted to bring to my colleagues' attention where they, there was some discussion from someone at the MTA saying that if you want to do a Valley Transit Zone, you have to remember about the $40 million that the MTA pays the county sheriff and LAPD for policing. It's not only, by the way, buses, but also the red line, et cetera. I was very involved when that happened with the mayor, very much, both in his role on the MTA and as mayor of the city, very eager to do away with MTA police. And because I believe there was an obligation, and an important one, to provide safe service, if they wanted to try and save money by getting rid of the MTA police, how are they going to make things safe? Well, we entered a very complicated negotiation. I believe, Mr. Holden, you voted against it. And we've been watching that very carefully. I think something just went through Public Safety Committee not too long ago to make sure MTA isn't trying to save money by not paying enough to pay our police officers to make buses safe. But I just want to throw that out in terms of the kinds of things that can be efficiencies and savings, and that it's interesting that the whole policing thing with MTA ever came to that kind of money, that it was so inefficient, and that the one solution was look, you know, to put it on the backs of the sheriff and LAPD. And I hope going forward in the future, we keep an eye on that and make sure that efficiencies aren't made by trying to squeeze on what they owe to the Los Angeles Police Department to make buses safer. Mr. Padilla, you represent the city on the Valley Transit Zone, and I am appreciative of that. I remember having a role along with you to get the city to have representation, and I hope that your request to the mayor, and I want to second it, is heard because the city wasn't even represented in those talks until you and I pushed and got involved. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Padilla, was that a request or a formal motion?
Just a request.
Okay, just a request. Very good. Okay, what we have before us is Mr. Holden's motion to receive and file. Is there any objection to receiving and filing item number 28? Seeing no objection, that will be the order. Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Not on the agenda, Mr. President, is Special One Motion presented by Mr. Padilla. The city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Friday, September 29th, KMEX, Channel 34, aired an investigative report on the state of the county's emergency medical ambulances. There were a lot of problems that were found. They outsourced some of their ambulances, while the City of Los Angeles also outsources some of their ambulance services. And therefore, this motion is made to ask the fire department to immediately review and report back on their inspection program, and also to urge the county to review theirs and the Highway Patrol to urge to review theirs. The council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and this was done on Friday, and that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act.
Good. Is there anyone wishes to speak on this item?
On the findings, the item itself.
On the findings. We're going to do the finding first, then the item.
Well, unless there's any questions on the findings, I'll let that go forward.
Okay. Let us first vote on the findings. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the findings and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
The item is before us. Now, let's talk to the subject matter. Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I don't know if any of the other council members either saw the segment aired by KMEX on Friday, or at least have heard from constituents or other concerned parties, but I did see a copy of the segment, a taped copy of the segment, and it was pretty disturbing. It had one of the paramedic firefighters from the county, sort of with the, I forget what it's called, when they sort of disguise the face, so you can't tell who it is, they distort the voice, so you can't tell who it is. But he was basically giving the reporter a tour of the ambulance and showing what shoddy conditions some of the ambulances are in, with faulty brakes and other mechanical problems, the equipment within, the ambulance itself, dirty, disrepair, lack of sufficient oxygen levels in the tanks, some very disturbing conditions. And not the privately-owned, contracted-out ambulance, but the public-owned county ambulances. And so because it deals with healthcare, because it deals with emergency services, I feel that it was important to bring this motion in today as a Rule 23 to address the issue. Now, the issue, the segment itself dealt with county ambulances, not city ambulances. And some people would say, "Well, let's make sure your house is in order first." And so the motion does include a look at our city's department, who, from our initial research, we can tell that they do a pretty good job. But a report back to committee is appropriate. We are urging the Board of Supervisors to look into the county matter, again, because it's a health and life safety issue. But the thread in all of this is state law that requires an annual inspection of ambulance vehicles when it's the contracted-out or the privately-owned ambulances. But the law is unclear in the inspection requirements for public-owned ambulances. So that's what this motion addresses, and I hope that you join me in supporting this motion.
Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? Special number one. The motion requests that the report come back both, Mr. Padilla, I believe, to transportation and public safety?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved and referred, and the reports request to come back to the appropriate committees. Forthwith. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
This is a time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Okay. After the public comments, we do have a series of closed sessions, colleagues. Mr. Lee Marx, or Madam, I'm sorry, Ms. Marx.
Hi, I'm Lee Marx, and I'd like to state I have been most severely violated, justice has been most severely violated. Since September 12th, I've been promised the motion. I've been here every day. I'm a sixth senior citizen, and if the motion wasn't going to be made, why was I told to be here every day, every day, to bring different papers? And every day, being promised that'd be another day? I know it's on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, but bringing, having to bring other papers on different days? And then to be told this morning that the city council doesn't have the power, that the city attorney, Mr. Pacheco, told me the city attorney told him today that the city, that the council does not have the power. If the council doesn't have the power, the city council, why didn't he tell me that September 12th? I spoke with the city attorney yesterday. I spoke with Ms. Henry, and she told me that the city council is going to have jurisdiction over this situation. The property that I bought at the auction, I bought it in 1998. Is that okay? I bought it in 1998, and they, it had a violation from, which I didn't know about when I bought it, or I definitely wouldn't have bought it.
Ma'am?
Yes.
This was an agenda item today, and the item was called, and there was nobody in the audience that identified themselves.
Oh, I did. I begged. I begged to speak. They didn't let me, but that's okay.
Madam, you didn't feel out of card, and we did recognize it. This item has been dispensed with as an agenda item earlier on to the, earlier on the day. What I would like to request that you do is that you contact the council office. This item has been referred to the Public Works Committee. And so this will be heard again in the Public Works Committee, and you can contact the clerk's office, and they will let you know when that item will be agendized in the Public Works Committee. But this item was dispensed with today already.
When I spoke with Mr. Pacheco, he told me that Councilman Wax is in charge of that committee.
That is correct. And the city clerk and Mr. Wax's office will be putting that item on an upcoming Public Works agenda.
And we're...
But public comment, ma'am, is for comments on non-agenda items. We've already dispensed with this. So if you would like, I can refer you to the clerk, and the clerk can indeed let you know when this will be before the Public Works Committee, so you can be heard.
That will not be in front of the city council, it'll be in front of public...
It'll be before the city council's Public Works Committee.
Okay.
So it was referred by the council to a council committee in charge of public works, and that item will be dealt with there.
And that, they have more power than the city council. Is that right? Is that right?
The committee consists of three council members, who will then make a recommendation back, if any, back to the council once they hear it.
I, could I just say one thing, please?
Very quickly, and then we need to proceed.
Yes. I begged him. I said to him, "Please make the motion timely, because otherwise I want to retain an attorney, because I certainly wouldn't go to the enemy for help."
I understand.
And-
And so now-
This is deliberate and malicious.
I understand. What I would like to refer you to now is to the city clerk, who will let you know when this will be agendized before the Public Works Committee of the city council.
They will hear from my attorney. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you, ma'am.
And it will be a class action suit, because so many other people are complaining. Thank you. Goodbye.
You can do that, because we, I know what you're giving.
Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Before going into closed session, Mr. President, do you wish to clear the agenda?
Yes.
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused to leave early tomorrow. City business, it needs a motion.
Okay. Ms. Siskowski moves. Ms. Walters seconds. Any objections? Seeing none, so ordered.
And also, Mr. Pacheco requests to be excused for city business Friday, November 17th. That meets council policy.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
The desk is clear for closed session.
Very good. We're going to be going into closed session. I would like to ask all members of the audience who are not privy to the closed session, please excuse themselves. Sergeants, would you please secure the room for closed session? We do have a few items that are before us. We do have item number 22 before us. Madam Clerk.
It's item number 22A in the case of Tipton-Wittingham versus City of Los Angeles, to authorize the city attorney to pay in the amount of, attorney's fees in the amount of $1,703,383 plus interest to October 17th in the amount of $41,934.26.
Okay. Would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Do we have any adjourning motions this afternoon? Yes, we do. The chair recognizes Councilman Fuhrer for an adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Irving Fuller. Ear Fuller was a terrific guy, very active in the Third Street business area near Cedar, Sinai, strong proponent of both the interests of the merchants in the community and of Cedar's. Really terrific guy when it comes to philanthropy in the community, very active in assuring that low-income kids had access to scholarships to the university from which he came. And more than that, was able to really, in a very courageous way, brave a 12-year bout with cancer in a way that really showed us all what it means to be a dignified human being. Ear Fuller is missed by many people. He's survived by his wife Bonnie, his kids and kids-in-law Bradley Pomerantz, Tina Pomerantz, and Denise Friedman. He's survived also by his brother-in-law Bruce Corwin and Tony Corwin. He will be missed because, most of all, for all who knew him, he was really a very loving, gentle, courageous guy.
Second.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. Members and friends, that we adjourn in memory of Ms. Willa Gibson. She was the beloved wife of Jim Gibson, who's always been a loyal and supportive friend of the 10th District. Both missed him. Mrs. Gibson have been in poor health, unfortunately, recently, and Mrs. Gibson succumbed to a battle with heart disease. They actually live in Ms. Walters' district. She died Wednesday, September 27th. Along with his support for the 10th District, because he'd always been there, Mr. Gibson has been a community liaison for supervisor, Yvonne Burke's office, and still is. It's on leave. The Gibsons are members of the Montzine Missionary Baptist Church. The funeral services will take place for Mrs. Gibson at the church on Saturday, October 7th, at 1:30 p.m. The church is located at 1300 East 50th Street at the corner of 50th and Hooper in Los Angeles. I think that's in Ms. Walters' district as well.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have actually two adjournment requests. The first, that the council adjourn in memory of Julia Delgado, who passed away on September 30th of this year. Grandmother and grandmother-in-law, respectively, of our friends Norma Cardenas and Assemblyman Tony Cardenas. She was born on April 27th, 1907, and leaves behind many children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And in conversations with the family, it's very, very evident that she was the source of the entire family's family principles and values, and certainly the love, kindness that the family exhibits.
I'd like to be a second on that one, please. I also-
I also would like to- All members would be appreciated.
All members.
And the second is actually a request that we adjourn in memory of Hilda Gershwin, grandmother of David Gershwin, from my office, who passed away on Sunday, September 26th at the age of 91. Hilda Gershwin came to the United States from Poland with her family fleeing the dangerous conditions of the First World War, where her village endured the invasion of the German Army. Upon arriving in New York, she learned English right away and went to school while working in the evenings. She married Dr. Herman Gershwin, and together they had three children. In the 1950s, the family moved to Los Angeles, where she worked at the May Company Department Store at Wilshire and Fairfax on the Miracle Mile. As an adult, she returned to school and went on to earn her diploma at Los Angeles High School, as well as an AA degree from L.A. City College, where she studied philosophy and history. She leaves behind three children, eight grandchildren, and many great-great-grandchildren.
Ms. Walters?
I'd like to be co-signer on the one for the Gibson.
Are there any others? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. President, before we adjourn, I just want to make sure that everybody was where. I will not be here on Friday and be leaving tomorrow early.
What time is early?
12 o'clock. I also will be leaving here early tomorrow.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Where you going?
Denver. I went to Denver.
Seeing no further business before the council, the council is adjourned. Have a good day.
You've done a good job. Did a good job, Mr. Savarnas.